All right, folks, it's 6:30, and I will call the April 27 meeting of the Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. Seeing as how we are on to a new meeting, I believe we will go ahead and call the roll again, please.
Debbie Moore.
Here.
Carrie Kahler.
Here.
Cynthia Meyer.
Here.
Ishmael Harris.
Here.
Scott Long.
Here.
Judah Ross.
Here.
Kristy Koch.
Here.
David Barrow.
Here.
Patrice Parsons.
Here.
Thank you.
Everyone is present, and we do have a quorum. Item three is consent agenda. I will read each item on there, and we can take them in global, or we can have discussion on any of them that we want.
Excuse me, Chair Person Moore, can you ask for citizen comments, please?
Oh, I'm so sorry, thank you.
Somebody else.
Do we have any citizen comments at the time?
Not at this time.
Thank you very much. Item three, consent agenda, is that okay? It's been a long week today, y'all have pity on me. Item 3A, consider action to approve meeting minutes from the March 30 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Item 3B, consider action to approve Bastrop Grove, Section 3, lots 9 through 19, final plat, being 18.265 acres out of the Nancy Blakely survey abstract number 98, located south of State Highway 71 and east of State Highway 304, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit 8. Item 3C, consider action to approve Bastrop Grove, Section 5, final plat, being 25.865 acres out of the Nancy Blakely survey abstract number 98, located south of Agnes Street and east of State Highway 304, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Please let the record show that it was approved unanimously. Item four, for individual consideration. Item 4A, consider an act on amending Section 2.4.001, nonconforming uses in structures, continuing lawful use of property in existence of structures. Item four, nonconforming use or structure may be expanded, reoccupied with another nonconforming use, or increased as of the effective date of this code unless authorized by the ZBA by adding an administrative relief component for residents. Mr. Jobe, would you please tell us what all that means?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners, again, for not leaving after the last meeting. Yeah, let's talk a little bit about nonconforming. What we're really talking about here is continuing the lawful use of a nonconforming structure, right? So, being nonconforming necessarily is not a bad thing. The first time, as a matter of fact, that anybody was ever nonconforming in the city of Bastrop was in September 14, 1999. So, there was a zoning and subdivision code from '81 to '99. When that changed, those structures that were built under that code and didn't match the new code were then nonconforming. So, but what we're not worried about is the nonconforming status as much as we're worried about the impact that it has on the people continue the use, right? So, that's really what we're talking about. And this is what we talked about, actually, at the last meeting as well. Since that time, this has seen some time with the City Council, they've made some suggestions, they had some discussion, and they said, hey, let's kick that back to P&amp;Z, let's talk about it a little more, so that's what we're here to do tonight, and then we'll make some kind of decision to bring back a recommendation for them. And just a, oops, that was definitely not all my fault. Essentially, what we saw in the changes, you saw them in your packet, is you don't want to have a negative impact on the current people that live there, right? The people that live there, they want a driveway, the lot standards that have changed, things of that nature. Let's move forward. And I talked about this just a second ago, good news, being nonconforming with the use in structure, a lot of that was taken out of the original 2019 code, almost the exact same language. What's great to note here is we actually don't regulate use from a zoning perspective, so that's really something we shouldn't have to worry about a whole lot. But the things like building types, the platted lots, or the structure that are determined to be nonconforming, that's exactly what I touched on. The first time that happened was in 1999. So, again, the status is not the bad thing, it's when you have to start spending money out of your pocket to come into compliance, and when is that, what do we think is fair, right? And not even what we think is fair, but what do we think about having an administrative process to make that smoother? Because currently, what you have to do is come back to P&amp;Z, and if P&amp;Z denies it, then you have to go back to City Council. And what we're really just trying to do is make that common sense decision and say, well, sure, you can have a driveway, right? Or whatever, something along those lines. So, again, if the use of the structure in the platted lot were in existence at the time of annexation, that's another way that you would become nonconforming. So, if you built something, we then annexed you, but you didn't match our zoning code, you're nonconforming. Again, not a bad thing, it just happens. So, what we're really talking about was how do I continually lawfully use a property and a structure, right? So, what we say currently in our code is you cannot stop the use for six months or longer. So, if you close the stores, you decide to leave your store, your bookstore, your house, whatever it is, that's nonconforming, and you abandon it, it takes an action to leave and kill the lights, kill, get rid of the accounts, just go, right? You have now abandoned that, and when you're a nonconforming structure, at six months you have to come back and get permission to be continual use. That is one of our triggers, right? Another is you cannot add more than 50% of the value, so at the CAD, if your building's worth $300,000, we don't allow you to expand that use up to 50% of that value. So, you couldn't add another $150,000 add-on, for example, right? Or you could, up to $150,000, anything over that you couldn't. That's currently how we handle that. It also says that you can't add a land or expansion of land, so, and again, it's the reason that it's that way, is if you decide to buy the lot next door, and you just want to expand your business, the question is, do you come into compliance with the code in your building placement, your lot type placement, and the things that happen, do you have your building that matches the code on that lot? Currently, at the moment, the answer is no, unless you come back to P&amp;Z, which is what we've been talking about. And again, we're talking about administrative process, which is the amendment we'll talk about on the next item. What you also have to do, which a lot of people don't think about, is you have to meet the current building code standards as well. That is also, what I would say, that's when we talk about nonconforming use, we mean the use of that building as it relates to the building code. Not that you can't have any kind of building, or any kind of use that you want, but there's an occupancy use as well, right? And that is where people gather, for example, right? Where people are consuming alcohol, that is a different occupancy and a different occupancy use. And so, for example, if you turn a home into an Airbnb, and it's multiple stories, it has to come into compliance, for example, and have fire protection, things of that nature, right? Only if you continue, or only if you can not to use it for over six months, right? Or you come back and ask P&amp;Z. I might have mentioned that a couple times already. And then, also, if there was some kind of damage that happened in a hailstorm, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, quick question, do these go to P&amp;Z, or do they go to ZBOA?
These go to P&amp;Z, per the chart in the technical manual. Looks like you have to have a public hearing, and then you have, and currently, if you made a decision, then appeal to ZBA. I said council earlier, but you're right. So, it would appeal to ZBA, and then ZBA, you would have to appeal to a court. So, what that does, is we're trying to put one more step in here administratively to make that common sense decision, so that we don't go straight into litigation, right? So, if it came here and you said no, if it was upheld, then ZBA, the next step is you got to go to court. Now, there's legal bills incurred, but there's no administrative relief for that, and that's what we're really talking about writing in today. And again, if there was some type of storm, or damage, or something happened, and 50% of your business blew away, 50% of the value, the same value with the BCAD, you would not, you would have to come into full compliance at that point. That is where you spend money, that's where it's painful, and that's what we're talking about tonight. I'm not suggesting that these should change, what I'm suggesting is an administrative process to move this along, so that we can make those kind of good decisions. So, we're going to recommend that you make this change here in a minute, but let me get to it, because here's what it should say. This is what you read last time. Can be administratively resolved if the following conditions exist, properties within 200 feet. So, what we talked about was dropping a pin, going out 200 feet, and if you looked and felt a lot like the neighborhood or your neighbor, then we could make an administrative decision at that point and say, you can go ahead and put in your, you can continue your nonconforming use, because you've been there for over six months and all that good stuff, right? Then it has to leave with setbacks, build two lines, a lot of those place type standards that relates to the lot, parking in the first layer, for example, which is a good one that seems to be a point of contention from time to time. But you're really looking to meet your built environment, right? And that is the goal. So, when we talked at City Council, they said it's 200 feet enough, right? So, that's kind of a question that they've kicked back to P&amp;Z to talk about. 200 feet's consistent with most zoning requirement, notification requirements. So, that was the suggestion where it came from for the 200 feet. Our attorney said, hey, that's a great thing to use, if you want it to be 200 feet, I just put in some, a couple extra words here, so is it 300 feet appropriate? So, 300 feet, for example, a block length is 330 feet. So, in your downtown area, do you want to look in the block, or do you want to look outside the block? And then it was also brought up as 500 feet appropriate, because there's some places in Bastrop where you can drop a pin for 500 feet and not hit another structure, right? So, we just have to make that kind of decision and think that through. And once you guys kind of decide on the distance, then I think we can continue to move forward. But I will say, as far as the 300 feet go, as you know, in Main Street, you can really shift a lot from 300 feet to, or 330 feet in a block. So, for example, at Main and Pine, you go to a completely residential feel soon as you leave, as soon as you cross Pine Street, right? You have one, the copper shop there, and then pretty much, or the storehouse, then copper shop. After that, next thing you know, it's all residential again, but it's P4 and it's commercial. So, if you were to do another 500 feet, you would absolutely be looking at it completely residential. So, again, glad I'm not making this decision, I'm just bringing this up. So, once we figure out the distance, and we figure a way not around the regulation, we're going to figure out a way through the regulation, right? So, what was proposed was a 200-foot radius from the property in question, and then the Director of Development Services would make that determination, right? What I have suggested in here as well, and take it or leave it, should there be an appeal process that is also administrative? So, they would either appeal that to the Assistant City Manager, the City Manager, the designee of the City Manager, just to make sure there's one more administrative step, that if there's a decision made, because we're really feeling black and white on this, should it go back and be looked at one more time at administrative level, right? Appeal to there, then it would kick into the actual, go into P&amp;Z, go into ZBA. I would suggest, if we were going to make that kind of move, that that appeal process is no longer than five business days, so you know it's the end of the week. And the current requirement, again, is to go to P&amp;Z for a public hearing and decision. And that is it. This is also, has to do with the nonconforming, but this particular one, I don't think we really had any issues on it the last time, but we'll talk about it again. If you'll recall, this was a nonconforming lot of record, right? So, what that means is, and I didn't get into as much detail. This one did get approved at City Council? This one did get approved at City Council. That's what I thought.
Only the nonconforming use in structure which remained.
That's what I thought. So, this did get approved at the last City Council. So, we'll just count this as part of your update here, we won't have to talk about it in a little bit, right? So, what basically happened is we said, hey, if you just need to come in and get a meter service, a water meter, we don't consider that extending infrastructure, go ahead and have a water meter, we'll let that account happen, and there's no reason to go into a plat, because a plat is also where you start to spend a lot of money. Now, if you're going to subdivide that and put in three houses, we'll have a different conversation. So, with that, again, we're just making a recommendation for approval based on your discussions. So, if you want to make any amendments, any changes, it's all up to you.
Questions?
How many?
Yes, I was going to add, for this, for this item, there is going to be a little bit more kind of discussion or opportunity for us to make the changes. We'll need to actually come back for a public hearing here in P&amp;Z, which will require a 15-day notice, kind of along those same lines, 200 feet within, you know, this area. Because of that, we've received some direction from council that also kind of considers accessory structures. So, what you will be seeing in your next agenda packet will be an ordinance that fleshes out all of those considerations, as well as those which you guys may have tonight as far as the feet, which way we're feeling comfortable, or any other additions you might have.
So, great. So, let's talk about it. What would you like to see?
How, how many appeals, or like, how common is this, that we have nonconforming properties and they're trying to get approval?
We have, so, I think there's two questions in there. There are requests for warrants to certain lot occupancy requirements, lot occupancy standards. As far as nonconforming lawfully continuing the use, I've only had one that I'm aware of, that was here on Chestnut, and it was sent back to the applicant to say, hey, come to P&amp;Z and make your case. And that's where we were at, and that, they chose not to do that. But as far as, again, this is only to make an administrative amendment for, to not hurt the folks that are continually using their, their nonconforming structure.
An aside note of that, Trey, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Sometimes people don't know, a lot of people don't even know that they're nonconforming. And I believe I remember 75 to 85% probably of the structures is nonconforming, so unfortunately, until they're given a situation, they really don't know how bad it can be. So, I think it's going to be something, if we don't start making amendments, we're going to have more and more of the citizens that have issues.
And again, we're talking about those pain points, right? Continually coming back and being able to reopen, reoccupy, and we want to make that administrative decision here, so that it doesn't have to come back and be so painful. That is the true subject.
Because time really is money, you know, really. I mean, and the more we have to put it off, the harder it is on our citizens.
Yeah. And we all, I will absolutely agree that we, since '99, we have had a ton of nonconforming structures. But, again, it's, like you said, when people find out what they need to do, should there be an administrative path for that, and it wasn't originally written in?
Carrie, had a question?
More of a comment. At the last meeting, we talked about administrative approval and agreed on a 200-foot radius, and my two cents is whatever distance we choose, that we be consistent across the code for a variety of reasons, for citizen understanding, for staff, so whatever we decide as a commission that is the appropriate distance, we should be consistent across all of it.
Yeah, and we're talking about, just to make sure I'm clear, for all nonconforming applications.
Yeah, any, any nonconforming application where we're looking at properties within a certain radius, I think we should apply the same radius regardless.
So, what I thought I heard you say is we should be consistent, i.e., if we notice 200 feet for one application, that should be the same radius for nonconforming other communities, and it would be my suggestion for Bastrop, that we expand that 200-foot radius to 500 feet, because we have micro parcels now within the code, and then you have larger parcels, and sometimes 200 feet ain't enough, or it only covers yours and somebody else's, and then the neighborhoods go and, hey, what are we doing? So, when we do the public notice, and it'll be more of an open house notification, I really would suggest that we do expand the notice requirement from 200 to 500 feet. State loss is 200, that is a minimum, 500 is, I think, a little bit more palatable for a community like Bastrop.
That addresses the point that you just said, right, Trey, because you can go to so many different sections, and if we had to have 200, that would limit us so much, where we would have so much coming back, that the 500 makes more sense to me, too. Yeah, I understand that.
So, that's right, but you're also talking about notification now. So, to be clear, we now notify 200 people, or 200 feet, I'm sorry, when we're changing zoning, now we're talking about 500 feet. So, which I think is fine, just expect more attendance.
But you know, a complaint that I have heard, and we've heard this in past meetings, is people think the 200 isn't enough. They want the 500. That's just what I've heard from our meetings before, so.
Yeah, and that was the conversation back at council, and they said, well, maybe it should be 500, we don't know, talk about it with P&amp;Z. And I just put in that a block's 330, but yeah.
I think more citizen notice is always a good thing. Do we, do we, is it, do we assess enough fees to pay for the noticing, because city notices for that? So, are we?
That is an excellent, that's an excellent question. I think we do, actually.
Spoken like a true planning director, truly, what we should be charging is the cost of advertising plus some small administrative. We don't have a cost of service study yet, but the law also says you must notify in a paper of regional circulation. We have chosen the Austin Statesman, right?
Or the advertiser, you're most of the advertisers.
Yes. We can probably do something a little bit more local, that is a lot more, less expensive, but we've made some choices, and we need to go back and visit that, and also the fees.
And there is, and, and you're absolutely right, we do post stuff in the Statesman most of the time when we can, but they have a really long lead time, right? And when you're, when you're, I mean, it's, you have to be, you have to know what you want to do two weeks before they know that you want to notify, and it's insane. So, it's almost a month out, and then we have certain triggers that we have to pull at 15, so. Oh, really? Yeah, so a lot of times, what we'll do is.
Those people read it?
Is go into the Austin American Statesman, because it's quicker, right? But we can absolutely cover the cost, or recover the cost fairly simply. A lot of times, we do that with a separate professional services agreement, because a lot of times when there's notice for zoning, or a pit, or something of that requirement, or a public improvement district, or whatever you want to call it, we do a professional services agreement with them, because we know there's additional legal fees, additional notification fees. But if it were just something really small, we probably would. But yes, absolutely would recover, great question.
So, what does the commission feel?
I got one more question.
Sure.
So, on the nonconforming, right, that.
It's not, you know.
Can y'all hear me, right?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay. So, I know it says for a period of six months or longer, right? How long is the longer, to where maybe other action is taken for this nonconforming or abandoned structure?
So, then that's, yeah, I think you did. As a matter of fact, I think you did say 24, I was, it was 18 or 24 months. So, that's another great question, is what do we think works? Is it, is it 18 months, is it 24 months, is it six months? Is that too short of a time? And that's really the question, because in six months, you're technically no longer allowed to use that structure, unless you come back and ask P&amp;Z, right? And then ZBA, and then, and again, what we're saying is, six months, okay? Do you want it to be a year? Do you want it to be 24 months? I don't know that anything becomes blighted in six months, I'll say that, just from my experience. It could definitely be blighted in 18 months, you never know, but that's just a range of how people take care of their property.
So, the, an example could be, that's a big issue, is the convenience store right down here on Chestnut.
Sure.
Because that was a unique situation, where the owner didn't even know that it had been vacated, because the tenant left.
Right.
So, there are situations where six months is really not a lot of time for.
Sure. And, and there was a couple, I do know that one particularly, and I think this is a great way to clear that up. When we talked about following the ICC codes, they actually, what made them nonconforming was two things. One, they were closed for 12 months, and two, the electric panel was so overloaded that it couldn't be turned back on. So, all of that had to be corrected anyway. It wasn't just a, hey, you've been closed for six months, but you would have heard that if we'd ever brought it back, but we never brought it back. So, it's the rest of the story, right? So, but no, 18 months, 12 months, 24 months, we're, that's what we're here for, to workshop it. Clearly, I lost the slide I was looking for, but go ahead.
I guess I would have one final comment for, at least from me. I think we should be able to empower people to have an appeal process. I don't want to give more work to the Assistant City Manager or the City Manager, because they have enough on their plate, but if that is the progression of people that we need to take it to, it's going to take it out of one person's purview, and at least put more eyes on it. And I think that the public's going to really appreciate that, and they're going to feel empowered in case there is a difference of opinion, right?
Great.
Yeah, I, I agree with David. I don't have a strong opinion on the distance from 200 to 500, but I think having an appeal process and allowing it to go to, say, you or Sylvia would be very helpful.
And we're going to talk a little bit more about that, I think, further on in the workshop. If we could just put a pin in that for a second. We thought we'd just give you a quick staff update and talk about the new, the new organizational structure of the department. And what you can see in here is, when you see the stuff that's in the light green, those are positions that are already filled, and the ones that are in white, we are looking for, right? We are hiring people, left and right, by the way. I have said in so many interviews in the last two weeks, I haven't done that many over the last 11 years. So, we've got quite a few director interviews, which is vacant. What we've added, this is relatively new, you may have seen this before council, I'm not quite sure, probably not, but the.
Yeah, they'll be seen before council.
Well, there you go. So, this is what we're talking about, is a process improvement manager. So, on top of your, your great management staff that you have right here, you know, Ms. Viviana here is going to be our customer services manager, and really focus on a whole lot of customer service, but this person's going to go back and review the process periodically, and make sure that things are still clicking and moving smooth, right? And this person that we actually have in mind, I'll just tell you, is now hired and has a teaching background, and that's really going to be the goal, is to learn this stuff, rewrite it the way that it needs to be done, and then teach it constantly to the staff. So, as new people come on, she's part of the onboarding process, so there's a seamless transition. Yeah, there's a seamless transition as you come on, you start learning the day, because there is your, you know, school day one, when you get in, you're talking to the process improvement manager. So, that's probably one of the most significant ones. And then you see, we've taken the technicians from two to three, we have added additional building, we hired a building official, technically, I don't see, where's that guy at? Right there. We've added a plan reviewer and inspector, a plumbing mechanical, and now we are looking for the last electrical and plumbing inspector. So, again, just to give you a quick update, that's the way we're headed, wanted you guys to know that.
So, you're taking your inspectors in-house, rather than.
The inspectors are in-house, yes, ma'am, sorry. So, we currently do a lot of third-party review and a lot, a lot of third-party inspections. That can sometimes slow things down. We're not completely getting rid of the third party, but we do want to have the resources in-house to be a little more nimble, right? It's all about being able to expand and contract when you need to. So, we're putting some staff in here to make it that happen. The, the third-party cost is fairly high, and we think we can add these additional positions without additional cost, or it's very minimal to the bottom line, based on these new hires. So, it's kind of an even money thing.
Glad to hear they're coming in.
That's exciting, because I remember a few meetings ago, the cost of, the exorbitant cost of contractors, so it's just a great thing that we can save the city money, and also hire more people, you know, that are here in the city, so that's exciting, and I'm, thank you all so much.
And one of the big changes, while we're talking finance, Tracy, you paying attention? Is she still here? Oh, yeah, man, I was fixing to impress her. All right. We're basically becoming an independent fund, right? So, in the past, we would have taken the one-time money and put that into professional service. So, if there was a surplus at the end of the year, sales tax did really well, we'd say, hey, we're putting that $450,000, plug it in over here for that third-party inspectors, third-party plan reviewers, things of that nature. And it was a, and then, but you had to compete in general funds, so, you know, nobody wants a building inspector over a policeman or a fireman, everybody loves a fireman. The guys with the hats, they get all the, all the praise, right? It's nonsense. So, I always say you have to have a road to get there, but whatever. You can't put out a fire without water, I'm just saying. So, anyway, but, yeah, the bottom line, I'm not, I'm not bitter about that at all. So, the bottom line is, basically, it's covered. So, now that this is an independent fund, it'll generate its own revenue, and those fees that are recovering that cost already will stay within that fund. So, it's really going to be a more solvent way to do it. We've talked about that in the past, it never picked up any steam, but since Sylvia's gotten here, it's gotten some legs, and we're ready to, ready to go, it's going to be a good change.
Excuse me, Trey, before we move away completely from the nonconforming, there was two considerations that I just wanted to bring up, kind of related to us through council, like we were saying, and I just want to give you guys the opportunity to have that heads up before you see it in the, in the ordinance that'll be before you next time. One of those is whether this applies to accessory structure as well. You know, we're thinking that as long as the accessory structure doesn't directly increase increase or expand the characteristics that render the use or structure non-conforming, that's also applicable, uh, for that administrative approval. Um, simply we would just be looking to see if it increases, like we said. And then kind of what Trey alluded to was, uh, you know, if you go like above 50%, that, uh, actual value of the building now be part of the consideration. So think about that, if that's, uh, something you're agreeable to or if there's anything in there that you would like to change. The second thing would be, um, how we look at routine repairs and non-structural alterations. Um, currently we've kind of crafted language around that to say that, you know, those routine repairs and non-structural alter- alterations would be permitted if, again, not extending or enlarging the characteristics of that use. And then looking at a timeframe for which, um, you know, if there's unavoidable casualty or damage that causes you to have to replace or repair, um, that that time or that repair commences within two years or so. So another kind of, uh, thing to look at, uh, you'll be able to see it more clearly and succinctly in the ordinance that we'll bring back to you guys, but kind of have that in your mind, whether or not those routine repairs or accessory structures will, um, affect how you, you know, chop up this ordinance.
So I'll go back to the list since we did touch on this earlier. Um, it feels like what I, what I think we've heard, and I'll verify this here, is, um, six months seems short, right? So do we have a particular, I had a number in mind, 12, 24, 18, 36?
For the repairs or for-
For, for being closed, let's just say.
Abandoned?
Yeah. So that way we can just kind of go through the list here and get some idea.
I think we should do at least a minimum of, of, uh, 12 months.
Uh, yeah, that's what I was going to recommend.
I think that's a fair time.
Fair time to, to put your stuff together. Got it. 12 months. Um, so again, this is what I believe, uh, our attorney here was alluding, alluding to, 50% of structural alterations. So can you expand up to 50% of the value? Or, or, and I think, I think we are saying that that could be an administrative something already. Um, but it's 50 cent, 50% good? Not 50 cents, sorry. Um, and, and do we care if it's additional structures outside, the footprint of the land? Again, that's all of, that's the same questions. Are we okay with buying land and expanding? Are we okay with, you know, adding on as long as we stay under 50% of the value and we do that incrementally?
I like that.
Right?
Adding on as long as we stay within 50%, right? Because if, if we get to just picking apart everything and labeling everything, then we have to, you know, add just more categories, right? So like you said, it gives us that flexibility.
And I would say routine maintenance is a must anyway. That's something that, if it were me making an administrative decision and they just needed to come in and replace the roof, absolutely, right? Uh, if you needed to fix a window that gets broken, absolutely. Um, this question is, can you, you know, add another 1,500 square feet on? And right now they say as long as it's not more than 50% of the value. So if we're still good with that number, we'll give it a 50%.
Is it appraised value?
So, so the- Appraised value, appraised value at the CAD.
So let me give you an example of, of what's in front of me.
Can you get to the mic so folks at home can hear?
Of what's in front of me right now. There is a, a property who has a, um, carport. No garage, just a carport. Uh, the gentleman wants to frame it in to bring his, um, disabled mother and brother in to live with him. The cost of what's on the appraisal for B-CAD and what he's going to repair, he's like this. On top of that, he's not going to meet the place type because he's parking in the front. He's just, he's not going to meet the pa- place type. So in this particular conversation, even though everybody around him has that, even though everybody's houses are going to look the same, it's going to fit in, he wouldn't be able to do it under this standard.
He would have to bring it to P and Z.
He would have to bring it to P and Z and ZBA. So that was the proposal. If we drop the pin, everything, and he looks like everybody else around, he should be able to do it. Some of these things still are going to conflict, which is why the administrative process that allows us to go, yep, that was the intent of P and Z and we get it. He doesn't meet that, one of those things, but the way it stands today, not meeting one of those things is a deal killer. So 12 months, all that's great. Maybe there's some language that we need to put in that says, one of those doesn't make it a deal killer. Just food for thought.
And that's, and that's excellent spot to go to. And that's, I feel like place type standards, which is why I highlighted them, aren't as important as life safety stuff like fire and building, right? So at that point, if we're not going to administratively approve you doing something unsafe, um, I wouldn't even suggest taking it to P and Z. We just make it come into compliance. But that is basically a, a, a non-conforming-
See, so-
Example.
And I a hundred percent agree because I think the problem and the perception from our citizens is we are overreaching, we are in too much with every little detail and it, and it, it causes them time and it calls, and which also they want to be compliant. They really do. But there hasn't been a way practically that they can do it. So I think the administrative step is extremely important for us to not just do this back and forth and these little nitpicking things that really aren't needed.
Agreed. And, and we, i- it's, it's not that variance processes weren't written into the code, but administrative processes for having it done at a staff level were not written to the code. If you remember, there was a lot of conversation when this thing was going through was if you don't like the code, you don't agree with the way that it's looking, then if you want it, they'd say doing different, right? If you want to do something different, well, that goes to P and Z or council. What we could have done better, and I'll tell you, is define what doing different looks like, right? We did not give you an alternate standard or alternate method to get that done. So if you're used to coming into a municipality and they say, hey, you have to be 10 feet from the wall and you have to do this, you have to do that, that breaks your brain as a new developer and you don't know what they're talking about, right? Because you go, oh my God, it's, the, what's great about the B3 code is it is super flexible. What's bad about the B3 code is it's super flexible. So, right? And, and, and I've, I've given this speech a thousand times, but the bottom line is the intent was to make sure that you didn't take away the ability to do something unique, right? Because that is what Bastrop is about. You always got something's a little different flavor everywhere. That is written out the tip, out of typical subdivision codes, right? And zoning codes, because they tell you, you have to be 10 feet from the edge of the street. You have to be 30 feet from the edge of the street. You can't have this next to that, right? We're saying, hey, let's all work together and be a complete neighborhood. If it weren't for the B3 code, he wouldn't have a farm on Main Street, right? So there's good things in there. We just need to better define how to get through and make it easier, right? And that's the whole process cleanup that we've been talking about, Sylvia more specifically for the last six months. So, um, and I think we knew some of this, it's just you have to stop long enough to fix it, right? And get the funding. So here we are. And it's going to take some workshops and I'm super excited about it. So as long as we can still meet that intent, I, I, I feel like there's some concern that we're going through this too fast. I'm telling you, I think that we're, we're going to make sure that there's lots of conversation. And at the last council meeting, they absolutely said that, hey, we don't want to stuff anything about anybody's throat, let's have some conversation. You know, that was a year and 12-month, 18-month process last time. Um, and there was 17, 1800 people that were engaged. We don't want to lose that. We've heard you, right? So here's where we get started tonight. Um, and again, I think, again, what I think I've heard you say is, hey, 50% is okay, but you can still make an administrative decision on that. You want to add accessory structure? Administrative decision, not a problem. Um, you want to wrap in your porch? Great. Um, eh, if you're going to wrap in your porch and not put in the appropriate electrical stuff, no, right? That's what I've heard you say.
And I, I have a, a comment to that, which is that, you know, my, my only concern with all of this is making sure that when those electrical issues, fire sprinkler systems, you know, if, if, if a property has been empty for six months, a year, and then they, they want to do a different place type, they want to have a, you know, an Airbnb or something, they should have to make the improvement for the fire sprinkler system.
And, and that's not going away here. It's just saying that we can look at it administratively and say, sure, that's so minimal, let's keep going. Um, and then we didn't have that ability before. That is really what it's about. It's not about wiping out the standard. It's about having a, another way to get through the standard, right? Um, and then the last is the, um, damage. I, you know, me personally, if it's, if you're, and maybe I shouldn't talk about this, but if you're a non-conforming structure and there's damage and you lose over 50% of your home, I don't know that we want to come back and say you can't build it the way that it was. So if you're going to raise one, I would suggest that it's this one, um, you know, to, or, or just again, allow that administrative appeal, but-
I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah, I mean, you're not-
It just makes no sense to me. And as a, and, and to anybody out there that has a home and has had some kind of damage done, it makes no sense. And I think the administrative, uh, step is very important on that.
And it's not meant to, to, like I said, to, to be hard on the folks, make them spend money. Um, it really is meant to come into some court of compliance because there are places all over town, and you're aware of this, especially on the north end, where there's houses built in right of way, they're built in low spots. You want to be able to correct that. That's the point of say, hey, this is non-conforming, let's fix it. I think we can do that by saying, all right, administratively, we're going to let you continue what you're doing, but you got to go above the flood, flood plain now, right? That's okay. And you can build a house exactly like you had because you're already on the plans. We're okay with that. Doesn't have to be closer to the road, but it does need to, because you want to match your neighbors, right? But we're not going to let you stay two foot up below the flood plain. That kind of stuff.
Well, help me understand why we're talking about 50% of appraised value rather than the footprint at one point?
That, yeah, that was just a standard that was picked, yes. So-
But it can be.
The, the- And, and the problem is when I, for example, if I bought my house and I paid on it, paid on it, and I bought it for a hundred thousand dollars 15 years ago, um, now the value's at $300,000. And for me to build something at $200 a square foot, I get to 50% real fast.
Yeah.
So that administrative appeal is, is huge. So, and that's what that's about. And again, uh, there's a, a, I would say if we're going to add something, like you talked about, this damage, due to damage, especially if it's an act of God kind of thing, all right? I think that's a, that's a good way, that's a good place to give a break. We ought to give a break on the, the fees as it is.
I have a question. We keep talking about, um, administrative appeal.
Hmm.
What, what's going to be the guideline for you guys?
Well, it will be whatever you write, but, but I would also say, just what we've been talking about, when it's life safety, we're not going to, when it's life safety, we're, we're not going to budge, right? Um, but I certainly am going to let you park in a driveway that you've, that your neighbor has, right? And that's, that's kind of the, the mix. Uh, you know, again, the, the, the intent of the code was not to, not to be tough on folks. It was really to eventually, as things go away, and they've been closed for now over 12 months and no one's done anything with them. And oh, by the way, great, let me give you a great example of a success story. 710 Chestnut, right? The food court. Y'all know where that is now when we say the food court? That was absolutely Ramos, right? Everybody remembers when that was Ramos, if you've been here for a while. It burned over 50% in damage. They had been abandoned. It was abandoned for almost two years. Um, it caught fire twice when they were tearing it down, right? This was really a, this was a great example of, you can't build that here. And they said, well, but can we build something different? And we said, sure. What do you want to build? We're open to that. We said, it just has to meet the intent of the code, right? And so what we allowed you to do, or allow them to do there was, now there's a small little fence, right? And that fence gives you that good street edge that we were looking for. The, the awning that you sit under with the picnic tables, right? That represents a building that takes up a certain amount of frontage. That's the kind of decisions we made administratively with some warrants, uh, because we knew it was going to be a good product, right? And that's, that, to me, that's a great success for how it worked. Um, I'm not sure that was the correct path. So now we're writing one that's absolutely correct. It may have been done administratively and not should have.
What you're, what you're talking about specifically is what the intent of the code was versus what the process that we put that property owner through. That's why I want us to be super succinctly clear what your intent is here. If the intent is that we are actually looking for authentic Bastrop and we want to give folks the ability to do what they had before, that's what we need to write in the code. And we need to make sure that when they want to do the food court and we have a public and private realm, we're not trying to build in the right of way. We're not trying to put trees where water lines are. And we've got some sense enough and the ability enough to make it happen. But in, in the box that we're in today, staff has been begging silently in the background, this makes no sense, please let us do that. And some of what you're seeing is just that. So in, I believe what you should hear from us is when this ordinance comes, you should also see the process flow chart of how we're going to execute it, which is why that process improvement manager is so critical.
Good questions. Well, I think we went through the list. Um, I'm not going to pick a percentage for you guys, I'm not going to let you do that. But, um, as far as the lawsuit of damage, are we okay with increasing that? Do we want to 100% of the value, 80% of the value?
I, I'm curious as to whether it makes more sense to, to do 50% of the square footage than the appraised value because of construction cost, because, because construction costs are so high that, that 50% of the appraised value, you know, if that's a bathroom, that might be, you know, a real small bathroom.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, to me, it makes more sense to go off total square footage, but I'm open to what our commissioners think.
I agree with that.
So we'd want to use square footage versus value?
Appraised value.
Got it. And is that for both?
Because appraised value is different than market value.
Absolutely.
You know, and it's a lot lower. So when you're going to build something, you're going to be building at extreme costs. So.
Great. No, that, this is absolutely more restrictive. So what you've done there is, is say, hey, you know, 25% of your building blew down, it's okay, right? Now, I don't want to get into details like, well, now you got to demo it because it was structural. Now it's 100%, but we can figure that out.
And I think that just makes so much more sense and it, and it's so much easier understood to say it that way, too.
Yeah. Because we had talked about square footage and, and a long time ago, yeah.
Perfect. I feel like we, Mr. Attorney, are you comfortable with this?
Sorry. And just for clarification purposes, is this, I guess, different than what we were talking about with the unavoidable casualty or kind of the act of God?
Well, I think we're talking about for both. Um, we're saying if there was an unavoidable casualty and you lose 50% of the building, 50% of square footage, um, same thing with structural alterations. As long as it's not more than 50% of the, right, square footage, yeah. Have 1,000 square feet, I can only add on 50% of that, right? And then I think you were asking, does that relate to accessory structures? And I think the question is, is accessory structures or accessory dwellings? Because I'm not sure that we're limited in accessory structures as we sit, but I could be wrong.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I brought up accessory structure because that was a part of a draft in which we were considering and the language that we use for that. So clarification on that would probably be needed.
So are we okay with accessory structures as long as it doesn't increase 50% over the principal building?
I don't see what difference it makes if it's a primary structure or an accessory structure.
Okay. It's still continuing the use, or expanding the use.
If it's an accessory structure, how does this relate to impervious cover?
That's a little bit different than this, what we're talking about tonight, but so...
Please help me understand because I'm a little ignorant to that one, for sure.
Because a lot of this stuff gets commingled and mixed up, right? And what we say in the, in the, in the building block code is, if you're in P3, for example, you can have a primary structure, and you can have two accessory dwellings by a row. So that's instantly three buildings, right? Mother-in-law house in the back, granny flat here, mom and dad, kids in the front, however you want to lay it out, then that's all great. What we say now is you can bring in an accessory structure and cover as much as you want, as long as you don't cover that 60% of impervious cover. So we let you have an alley, everybody needs their own shed to store their lawnmower or their fishing gear or whatever. We allow that currently now, as long as you don't impact the drainage, put it over the top of a water line, put it inside of a PUE or something like that, block your neighbor's drainage, all that's still allowed. So as long as we're not going to flood the neighbor, I think we're good. And that's the kind of, and that's the next administrative process we'll probably talk about as we go through the code. Because there, some of that needs to be written in as well. Right.
Oh, yes, my goodness, we're going to, sorry, I really, truly, I'm, I'm, I'm brain fried. The circular reference that is created in the code is frustrating. So, for example, you can have the granny flat, you can have the accessory structure, you can have the, your, your primary house. You can't cover more than 60% of the lot. So you think, and you go, and you go to Sam's, or you go to Home Depot, and you go buy one of those things, and you think you're great. Well, you're not because you've exceeded 60%. So we've got to figure that out on how that is, because there are alternate mean and methods. You put, you put it on skids, water can flow through. But again, we're in a very tight box right now. And then the other thing is mobile homes and modular homes. We say you can do it, but it is virtually impossible. And we touted it as affordable housing, but it is virtually impossible in the code to do it because of some of the stuff you just asked, frontage, place types, all this other stuff. So on the north side, where we do have some of those structures, if they become damaged, we wouldn't be able to put them back, so. Same but different. And they are very different in some sections of the code. And in other codes, they're overlapping, and they feel like they're co-mingling. So we have to do a better job to bring that forward, so. Put that on our next workshop.
Got it. So again, just where we, what we were talking about, we're fixing to talk about on the next slide, I swear. So pinning that again for just a second, just to give you another quick update. Previously approved amendments were the fences, was the glazing requirement, was the lot of record that we've talked about. We're still working on the nonconforming use in structures.
What was the glazing requirement?
The glazing requirement, and I may not have this completely right, was reduced...
Reduced.
To 20%? Is that right?
From 60.
Right, from 60 to 20%, and it, and it, and it had to do with clear glass, right? So the thought there, the thought behind glazing altogether, just so you understand what that's important, I'm sure you do that as an architect, you know what I'm talking about? It's really about breaking up the facade, right? How you do that, I don't think really matters. But what you don't want is a big, flat metal box with one tiny window, right? It's just not pretty, doesn't feel good. So what we've said is, you don't have to, you have to have 20% glazing, but there's another way to get, make that architecturally stimulating, right? And that's something that we can talk about as we continue, but that's it. I mean, that's, that's really what that was for. It wasn't to say, hey, you have to have all this glass. No, it was to break up and give you a good feel, um, so that it's not all just a flat box that doesn't feel comfortable or safe when you're, when you're walking by it.
The picture in the B3 code was that Main Street business that had a first floor business, and so you wanted that storefront, and then it had the live quarters above so that those storefronts were visible, and you could have that promenade feel as you walked in front to be able to see through. But don't close your curtains because we'll cite you. That's a different issue.
So...
I can't make it up if I try.
So again, nonconforming use, the fees for the variance were reduced to $500. It was currently $3,000. So a newly approved items, there's currently a moratorium in the Iredale District, so the Iredale District, you're familiar with that, they're kind of looking at...
Sorry, you said that was for the nonconforming. What was the variance?
The variance fees were changed, yeah, they were changed from $3,681 to $500. So it is now lower.
That's the same, same for the nonconforming?
No, 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 those are two separate items. We're still talking about the nonconforming. That was actually brought back to PNC.
Oh, sorry, okay.
It went to council for a first reading, and they said, whoa, whoa, send it back to PNC, let's talk about it a little bit more. That's what we've been doing tonight. And then just to give you an update, they've also currently said, hey, let's reduce the variance fee. So it went from $3,600 change to 500.
Okay, I've got a fee, I've got a fee question.
Sure.
If we're noticing people within 500 feet, is $500 enough?
It is if you let me advertise in the Bastrop advertiser. It is if you allow me to change.
But are we not mailing letters to homeowners as well?
We will, we will. And it was really sent to $500 in the hopes that we also have administrative approvals as well, so we won't really have to use it. The language really was punitive, and that's not really how we want democracy.
Again, some newly approved items, certificate of appropriateness. The Iredale District was actually adopted outside of the range of the appropriate month in the year, basically. Should have been April, was done in November. So for now...
Wait, go back, go back? It was done in the wrong month?
Yeah, so you had to, you had to create a historic district, right? By April of 2019, it was done by November of 2019. So we missed that window. It's been challenged, and for now, it's, there's a moratorium. So a certificate of appropriateness is only on the nationally registered areas in Bastrop. So you can still continue to do that per state statute. So those three blocks of Main Street, for example, that are on the national register, that still requires you to come to the Historic Landmark Commission, that still requires. But every well in that Iredale District does not. However, let me tell you the next good news. We're currently looking at redrawing some of the lines and then, and becoming a certified local government, right? And by doing that, becoming a certified local, help me out here, is that the right name?
Yes.
Certified local government. Basically, that allows you to overlay a historic district once you meet that criteria. But that's going to take a little more work to get there. So we're working on that at staff level. Once that's done, we may redraw some lines, because it was originally just the overall Iredale District, right? And there wasn't much thought in the early, it was, we already had the layer, right? So that's what happened. So again, that's what we're fixing. We're also working on a prorata developer reimbursement policy. The first reading of that passed Tuesday night. Basically, what that means is, there's water lines, there's sewer lines, there's improvements that need to be made. This allows the developer to put that in and then recoup some of their money as they tie on. So for example, if you're the guy at the very end of the line, and you have to run a water line all the way, two miles, it hurts your feelings when you have to pay for the whole thing and everybody else gets to tie on for free. So this type of policy and this type of account will allow people, the developer to be reimbursed for some of that funding, which will kind of be a pool of money that they can draw from and continually keeps the, it truly keeps the citizen from paying for it, the developer, and anybody that ties on will.
How is that money raised? How are they reimbursed?
It'll be through a contract. So we've done something like this in the past, there's no policy for it technically, and how it should be done, but the Head Start Building, if you ever remember the Head Start Building over there, off of Mesquite, that was an example of where we did a 20-year agreement that once the Head Start Building built all the infrastructure, as people tied on, you had to pay them back for that. Oddly enough, there was only two, since I've been here, that actually happened to, happened to dig through there, and they said, hey, we need to put a sewer line. Is there any extra fees? I was like, I don't think so. Let me check some records. Lo and behold, we had an agreement that they had to pay the developer 800 bucks or whatever it was, because it was so cheap to put a sewer line in back then. I think they did the whole thing for like $2,200, right? $20,000, sorry. Anyway, point is, it's something we've done in the past, but now there'll be a policy around it where the developer will put the money upfront, and then they'll recoup it as people tie on. So much like impact fees, when you come in and tie into the system, you'll, you still have to pay your impact fee for us, for capacity in the plant, for example. But you're going to owe that developer his share, too. And it may not be the whole percentage, but it could be some of it. Because he's, he obviously has a requirement, he or she, let me clear that up, would have a requirement, for example, they may need an eight-inch water line. But we say, you know what, let's make it a 12. Let's make it a 12 so people can tie on, because that makes sense. He gets the reimbursement for the difference, right? He had to put an eight anyway. And that's, that's the difference. So and that, and the cost is minimal right there. We're talking dollars per linear foot in just the material versus the sunk cost of digging the hole, hiring the dump truck, backfilling it, all that good stuff. So now's the time, it's never cheaper than today. It's a fact. And, and this is where I may need a little bit of help, but I think I've got it. There's simplified processes currently being worked on for trade permits. And the way I understand that is there's been two committees, subcommittees, that have been formed as part of the DCA, and one will work on... Go back one? And one will work on the residential process. And then the people that are, have more commercial background will work on some process improvements commercially, and then bring those forward for us to vet here. This one's different?
Yes, this one's different.
I'm not saying they're right.
No, he's right, he's half-right, residential and commercial. The simplified process for trade permits is really that is. Those plumbing, mechanical, electrical that have a licensed trade person, that permit should go in and out. We really shouldn't have to touch it, and that is a great deal of the work staff's doing right now. So they were running tests last week when I left. I'm not sure where they are with the test, I'll have to circle back. But essentially, if you're a plumber and you're going to change somebody's water heater, you can get your permit online and go, and you get your inspection, and we're going to have an audit to check a couple of them and see who's doing what they're supposed to be doing. And if we find folks aren't submitting their license or aren't submitting their insurance, then we'll focus on that. But we really shouldn't have to touch those. Those should be an automatic licensed trade person type permit.
That's exactly what I meant to say.
So is that, did that take care of the problem where they had to have all of the trade permits up front? Okay.
Certified local government, see there, I knew it was on this slide here somewhere. That is, we absolutely talked about that in the new boundaries. And this is what I was looking to just a second ago, was two new process improvement subcommittees as part of that DCA to talk about what they think will make it better and smoother, and then they'll submit it, and then it'll be vetted, like I said, at staff level here, and we'll continue to go on. Some of the proposed amendments, which I think are important to talk about. A lot of people like things about the 2019 code, right? And a lot of people like things about the building block code. They really do. What, what they liked about the 2019 was there's a shared access and circulation, right? So the shared access, circulation...
That's what we would bring back.
That's what they would bring back for shared access.
Let me, let me do this slide.
You do it.
Sorry, I did this, and I wasn't expected, I wasn't expecting to be here tonight. So the group has been looking at the things that work in the B3 and the things that don't. And the things that don't are mostly on the commercial side. After reading the B3 and going through what the intent was of the community in terms of circulation and path and, and a friendly feel to a development, these are things that you can't let go. We can go back to some semblance of a code, but these four or five bullets are really what your B3 code was meant to capture anyway. Shared access and circulation for vehicles and pedestrians, right? Not just for the people shopping, but you mentioned for the people working there. Lighting, right? We don't want light pollution. We're not dark sky, but we are dark skylight. There is shading, you don't want to light pollute anybody outside of your particular light. Landscaping's important. Right now, in the B3 code, you call it public and private realm. There still should be some interior landscaping, because it does have a cooling effect, right? Shades and shade, I mean, you know, feet and feet and feet of pavement is not where anybody wants to be in terms of parking. The other thing that I want to talk about with landscaping and parking is we are overparked in a lot of today's type of shopping centers. So those parking ratios need to be revisited. They, they really do. There's, yes, even at Christmas time, you might have to park in the fifth row, but even then, there are still empty rows. Safe pedestrian pathways and that building articulation that we talked about. We did revisit the glazing, but we still don't want those flat boxes. There should be some interest for the eyes to land in terms of the building. So as we go through the code and, and folks go, well, maybe not the B3 code, but maybe this. I think there's going to be a good mix of it both. The committee has been receptive to those items. Nobody's really bucked anything about what we felt like we were going to pull out and would be good if we had some other semblance of a commercial code. And then planned unit development is a big one, because we pulled that out of the B3 code. And so right now, you see staff essentially doing a PUD review. We do several site reviews, we do several reviews before it gets to preliminary, and then we do more reviews, and then it gets to final. What a planned unit development does is you have to show all of those things anyway up front. And it allows us to be more flexible to go, oh, okay, you needed 53 parking spaces, you only have 51, but you're addressing small car parking over here, and it allows us to be super flexible. So I want to reintroduce that back into the code that gives us at a staff level, super flexibility without drawing out the process, and you guys talking about it ad nauseam for, you know, 15 months.
And that's, that is absolutely kind of what I was talking about earlier, is there was always a way to get through there, to get that variance, to do something different, but it had to come here, which takes a month. And then it had to go to council, which takes another month. That administrative approval just was never written in. And again, I think we have some really good understanding of what the intent was. And like you talked about, you want trees, you want a shaded, shaded walk. I think one of the things that did come out of the B3 code that was great, the way the 2019 code is written, for example, it says you have to have three trees within 100 feet. I was just driving down Old Austin Highway yesterday, never even thought about it. I saw a young man walking behind HEB, it's a beautiful six-foot, eight-foot wide hiking bike trail. There's a 100-foot stretch, no shade, three trees in a pile. 100-foot stretch, three trees in a pile. It was shady every 100 feet, when the real intent was to have shade every 30 feet, so that it's shady for the whole walk. We said that in the B3 code, you've got to have one every 30 feet. We said in 2019, you have to have three within 100 feet. And so the developer was like, screw that, I'm not putting in extra irrigation, three trees, right? So we need to, we need to do that, we need to talk about that. I mean, that is truly what happened, and this is a wordsmithing game that happens over and over again in every day of the last 27 years of my life. And I'm not bitter about that, but my point is...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, 27, yeah.
Can I ask a question? What are some of the things they are opposed to?
Private, at public streets, I'll tell you, I can answer.
I can talk, I can talk about that, I got it. So the, what, what is, what folks are not a fan of is, is the gridded network, right? Those local 330 by 330 grid requirements. They don't want the street to be public. And I think that's going to be one of the big discussions that we're going to end up having here. They want it to function like a road, but they don't want it to be a road, right? And I think we're comfortable at a staff level, as long as it function and feels like one, then that's okay. Because the purpose of having a public street, instead of having a 25-foot drive aisle in the middle of a shopping center, is, is to make sure that there's shade, is to make sure there's a designated pedestrian path, is to make sure that as you're driving through there, it's not one big open area. It has driveway cuts, for example, right, every couple hundred feet. So it doesn't, it, it is a multimodal pedestrian yielding type of stuff. So you can ride your bike, you can walk. But that was, the connectivity was also the intention, but the pedestrian feel and the pedestrian yielding stuff was also important. Go ahead.
So the Burleson Crossing would be one that they would want to go by, correct?
That's correct.
That's what they want?
Yep.
Because it works.
And I think, and so let's, and I think that's the conversation...
It works for the purpose of the streets of how...
And I think that's the conversation we're going to have, because I'll, I'll, I'll just go back and say, in about 1996, there was a little company named Walmart that wanted to come here, right? And then we smacked the street on either end of it, and that's some of the worst traffic we have everywhere, because we didn't require them to have a road in the front. So I think there's two sides to this story, and that's what we're going to talk about in these proposed amendments. So what's bad about cutting through a parking lot technically is it's illegal, right? So we don't want to encourage that kind of behavior, but we also want to figure out a way that it's public access, and the developer can't close it, they can't put speed bumps, they can't do those types of things. So if there's a cross section that functions just like it, we're good.
So we want to marry for the best, right? That's what we want to do.
That's correct. That is the goal.
Exactly.
That is the goal. Go ahead.
Just to get on my soapbox for a minute, the tree issue of having three trees every 100 feet instead of one tree every 30 feet is precisely, in my opinion, why these conversations need to be community-driven and not developer-driven. Because the developer is always going to look, no fault of theirs, but they're always going to look for the way to do something as...
Financially.
Financially, economically, expeditiously, as they can for themselves.
Agreed. And, and that's said very well. I'll just leave it at that.
And why there's discussions after discussions that times need to be made. Then decisions don't need to be made at one meeting or with an amendment here or amendment there that could change the whole intent of an issue.
That's right.
So I have a question about these workshops or meetings that we're going to be having. Are we going to be taking proposed amendments that came from the commercial sector to the residents and say, you know, this is what was proposed, or what we're now proposing? Is it going to be based off conversations that we've had with the commercial groups, the developers first? Or will we be taking the same basic questions to the community that we're taking to the commercial and then compare?
So what, what I suspect will happen, and I could be off, that happens sometimes, is, excuse me. These things are important to us. The shared access, the circulation, the dark sky, right? The landscaping requirements, the trees, the building articulation, and having the metal box. So at a staff level, we'll probably vet that before it comes here, I would imagine. Because they're going to say, we don't want to do any of that. We're going to say, well, these five things are important. And then we'll have that discussion and bring you something that I think we can agree on. You don't want to make the salvage here. You really want us to say, hey, have this cross section and make it look this way,[1755.61] You really want us to say, hey, have this cross-section and make it look this way, because this meets the intent. And I, I like to draw a little example, and a pedestrian path, a designated pedestrian path, for example, in an area like Burleson Crossing, like you mentioned, if you'll notice, we started that, that was the intention. But as we expanded, I don't think we did that. And now, something we would require is to make sure that plan is laid out, maybe as part of a different process, right? And it's done, and then as people continue or somebody else builds, that's the plan, it's documented, you still get what you want, but it's, it just needs to be thought through. So, to me, a parking aisle with a nice median and a curb, and then you park this way and you have sidewalk you can walk on, that's a pedestrian path. Stripes through the parking lot from each little knob to knob is not a pedestrian path. So, that's the kind of stuff we would vet and then bring to you with the proposed cross-section, I would imagine that we can all agree on, from the commercial level and the residential. Does that sound fair?
Well, your question was, is it gonna go there and then the residence? And the answer is yes. It goes there, it comes here, and then we put it out to the residence.
It goes to the council then comes here?
No, no.
Yeah.
The development group, because that's, they're obviously the ones building, so it's gonna go there.
Yes.
With input from us.
Yes.
It's gonna come here and then it'll go out to the public. So, we're doing the same for the residential as well, by the way. It's two different, two different groups going on. And the amendments that have been brought so far, those were on staff's low-hanging fruit. Those are not, none of these so far have been developer-driven. These have all been staff's low-hanging fruit. So, especially the administrative approval process. We don't like bringing it here either.
So, and again, I think that's exactly what we were talking about, isn't the proposed amendment, we called it B3 Lite, free version, I guess. So, we're gonna think those good features and we want to marry those with the other things that make sense. And that's kind of the goal. With that, I'll take any more questions?
No, I think that's excellent, because we're trying to make it work all the way around. And the thing that I've heard, you know, some people, let's just go back to the way it was, and it's like, well, but some things didn't work the way it was, you know?
Yeah.
But this is so important that we are going to make it work for everyone by making it the best of everything. So I, I agree.
And this was always intended to be a living, breathing document. I think everything happened so quick, so fast. Now it's been vetted a little while, everybody's like, eh, we don't like this, we do like that. Now it's time to bring it back. This is absolutely what we're doing. And I think that was always the intention.
They don't like, so they don't like public, public streets, but more than anything, they don't like the process. More, more than anything. It is a very upside-down process right now. It is a very expensive, very early-on process right now that really turns people away, and they don't, they don't want to develop here. So, I said that. I said, let's look at the process first and then we can peel away other things. The process, we were supposed to meet this week, unfortunately had an emergency and wasn't here, but we were starting with the residential process. And I know that's gonna inform the commercial process, because the site is the site is the site. There's a little bit of tweaking, but I think we can shave the process down significantly so that things run concurrently. We say they run concurrently today, but we pull out a difference, because things change, right? You decided you wanted it this way, and then the engineer comes and touches it and it's laid out this way. So we, we start over again in a site review, because you changed just a little bit. And then we get a little bit further and it changed again because drainage, because now we're informed a little bit more. So, in our attempt, that's the normal, in our attempt in the pendulum, we said, okay, well, we want everything up front so that you don't really have to change anything, so we're all informed. And I said to people, well, you're making me marry before I've dated, because I get a neighborhood regulating plan approved, and now I'm married to that plan. And so the engineer comes, we have more things, there are things on the site that may change, and in order for me to change something, it's like I gotta go through a divorce and it's expensive and it's painful and we have a lot of financial interest, and so nobody wants to do it, so we abandon or we sell it to another developer along the way, and you never end up with a good product that way. It's better to be working through the process together so that we know what we want, things are informed as we go, without throwing the entire baby out with the bathwater. So we've got some pinch points, but again, I think what would be important for this group to also understand is not only the code changes, but how we're going to implement them. Because I promise you, nobody up here understood the non-conforming use pinch point. You didn't, you just didn't understand that if I close my curtains, I'm now got a violation, right? So.
Any more questions?
That's what I was gonna ask. I think tonight's been very informative, and I really look forward to workshopping some more things.
Might ask them to meet twice a month.
Do what?
You said you make it, ask, meet a little more often, maybe twice a month.
I didn't say I wanted to do that necessarily.
Well, so it was.
But it wouldn't be the first time.
Yeah. Well, it was my thought that things are going to be very much a puzzle piece as we begin to work them together, very much a foundation and building a structure. So, one session will build on the other, build on the other. So, it may be helpful to meet every two weeks for a little while, but I won't know that until we pretty much plan it out.
Don't wait too long, summer's coming up and there might be plans and a lot of people missing.
Got it, got it, got it, yes.
I do think we talked a lot about the updates in the Development Services Department already. Unless you have some more questions? Any more questions?
Are there any more?
Yeah.
Are there any more? I don't think so.
Just a quick run-through on the, the monthly activity and volume report. Has everyone got a copy of this? Perfect. So you can see it's been.
It's the [inaudible].
Yes. So, again, very busy. You can see 144 building permits total, and then 41 related to, related to planning. Is there anything that we'd like to add to future agendas?
Are we, are we done with the, are we done with the workshop? So we'll go to item six, update. Update on recent city council actions regarding Development Services Department.
Sorry, that is what I'm doing, sorry.
I'm reading the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
As the chair.
I would like to, because we've talked about this in the past, and I don't really know how it stands or if it stands anywhere, but people are concerned, especially in downtown areas that are the old districts, about the Airbnb's issues. And I don't really know what we have with Airbnbs. I don't know what policy is or if we have anything, but I, I would like for us to start talking about that.
Registration process.
I think just something to bring up a discussion, Adam, about them at the next meeting, and there's several ways to handle it.
We've had discussions about these before in the past, including talking about what other cities and everything else have done to try and the issue ahead of time. I think it was rather unfortunate every time either one of y'all folks had mentioned Airbnbs earlier as examples. I'm like, no, please. But, but that is something that we haven't gotten around to. We hinted about it, we've talked about it, we've talked about how other cities have handled it. And whether or not it's a problem here yet, it will be at some point, and so it's gotta be addressed at some point. And whatever we need to do to take action now rather than later, I think is a good idea.
Well, I think we're already at later. Airbnbs are the other side, are the dirty, ugly side to affordable housing, right? They take rental stock off the market. The other side of that is, they may help a landowner make their mortgage payment, because properties are so high. So it's that, it's that dirty little secret of how you're going to win at the mortgage game when we have an economy like this.
Regardless of that, I'm talking about more of, of what they bring to neighborhoods and disruptions.
No.
And everything else. And that's why I think, yeah, I understand people need to make money off their house, they can rent their house, they don't necessarily have to Airbnb it. That's more of a business opportunity on their part, as opposed to just trying to make their mortgage. I just want to figure out what we're gonna do about that ahead of time and taking keys from what other cities have done and trying to incorporate that into some sort of plan of action so that we don't end up in a situation where neighborhoods are packed with partying, people that are going to Cota for, you know, F1, or that are going out there for MotoGP or whatever. Because of our proximity and because of the growing, you know, infrastructure between us and Austin itself, people are staying here now. It's, it's easier to get to the airport than it is if you're out in B caves or somewhere out west, so.
Since that's not on the agenda, I don't think that we can go into much discussion on it tonight. We can definitely ask that it be brought up.
We can. So the question on, on my end is, you want to see what other cities are doing, you want to see what we can and can't do, and then perhaps a proposal for us. Right?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I think I remember, wasn't it last year, two years, three years ago, Viviana was in on a group studying Airbnbs. And so, I don't really know where we, I really don't know anything.
And that's where, that's where I am too, because we, we had discussed this in the past, it was probably prior to, to when you came here.
And we'll discuss it in the future when it's on the agenda.
Well, it's under items for consideration.
Items for consideration.
Right, but it's not for discussion of how we might, it's, we want to talk about the Airbnbs.
So you really want to know the scope of what we want to talk about?
Yes, yes.
And I want to talk about the whole scope.
Oh, okay. No, not yet. So, how many? What we can do and what other cities are doing? Is that pretty much? Okay.
And, and if we have any current policy or what we've already done, is that?
Is there anything? I mean, like, like Cynthia mentioned, there was, there was something that was churning a while back and then we never heard much else about it.
So currently, a lot of that is addressed in the building code, right, or the residential code. You're not allowed to be a hotel if you're not meant to be a hotel technically, and there's certain building code requirements that come with that. When you're, same thing kind of goes with, you're allowed to rent your house, right, and stay in the house, but you're not allowed to rent your rooms in the house necessarily, type of thing. That's kind of addressed in the building code. What I think you're talking about is what are the cities doing as far as registration? Are you keeping track of where they're at? There's a hotel occupancy tax that should be collected for that type of thing. There's lots of opportunity that need to be done, but right now, the life safety stuff is done through the International Code Council things. And then, we currently don't ask if you're registered or not. We do do an audit from time to time, just to check our hotel occupancy tax, but you're absolutely right, now's a good time to talk about it.
For specific items, I would say how many we want to have within the city, if there's a limit on that.
Can't do that. I don't think we can do that.
Are we not allowed to?
I don't know how you could.
I came from a tourism city.
What, but what you could do is, is, is require, you know, for them to register.
Is that not what Austin did? They limited like the permits?
You have to have a life safety requirement for registration, which we've had fires and floods here, so you meet the first checkbox of life safety. So what we can bring is how you can get through a short-term rental. We're severely restricted by recent legislation. But there are ways through the regist, there are ways to get through a registration process. But much like the predatory lending, we cannot regulate how many you can have within a certain perimeter. Yeah.
And then, the other thing I'd want to add is some process to audit, not how many we have, but how many are on the platform and what our enforcement is.
Now, that one is a, it comes, it's a, it's a dual-pronged, it comes with the registration and there are ways to get through the registration, but yes, it, it, it would come with an enforcement arm that ends up in municipal court. I'm looking at the attorney, because it'll end up in municipal court.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, you're gonna manage that through nuisance more than you will, anything else. And there's a loud party or something like that.
Does she have a question?
Well, I do have something for the updates, but I think we need to get through our other agenda items, right?
We're about done.
Okay. So, I just, where are we at on the Burleson, the other addition to the Burleson Crossing project?
Would you like to end on the next agenda?
Yes.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes. Yeah, not, I'm not trying to bring up anything for discussion, right? Let's put that on the agenda.
He's ready to be on the agenda.
Okay.
I think we're close.
Yes.
Anything else?
Okay, anything else? Then we move on to item seven?
Perfect.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are opposed, anybody?